Good evening, everybody. I would like to call the June 8th, 2023 regular board meeting to order at 6:00 PM. If I could available, Mr. Williamson, if we are in location, this thing is not appreciated.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you so much for this day. Thank you for your many and your blessings. God, I pray that you bless this meeting. You bless everyone that's here and their family. Thank you again for your love toward us. Help us to do what's right and do your will in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. And would please stand holy. My prayers allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item is the approval of the agenda. Dr. Thomas, do we have any amendments to this agenda?
No, sir. We do not.
Do I have a motion to approve this agenda as presented? Mr. Williamson?
I'll say.
Mrs. Finley? Is there any discussion? All in favor? I vote motion carries. The agenda has been approved. The next item is recognitions of Terry Harper, Pickens County Youth Enrichment. Dr. Chad Flack, would you tell us about this presentation? Dr. Flack?
Good evening. Hope everyone's having a nice day. Um, I want to start by saying that I want Dr. Nelson and Ms. Petty to come up here too, because they were in good parts in all this, especially Dr. Nelson, who has worked with this program that we're going to recognize Dave for in just a minute, for a long, long time. But um, I'll begin by saying that Dave has done worlds for the community here in Pickens over probably 15 years, I would believe right now, if I'm getting this correct on all accounts. But Dave helped establish the Pickens County Youth Enrichment Program, which was a program designated solely for middle school students here in the county. And that began with sessions where they came in and worked with gifted students, provided different opportunities, and they tried to expose them to different aspects of education and things they could do career-based. As time has gone along, those sessions changed over time. They morphed into working with all students throughout the building and becoming sessions where they had doctors, loggers, veterans onsite to meet with kids and to talk to kids and to work with them and explain different things. But beyond that, though, Dave, who was the linchpin of this, all the way back to, I know, when Dr. Lemieux was still the principal of Pickens County Middle School, they helped to raise funds over and over and over again to help provide scholarship money and help to pay for students to go on field trips to universities to attend and to look at and to get to know people there and also to go on field trips that we do at the middle school. In that time, they have raised over excess of $150,000 that has been donated. That's as far back as we could track and look into everything. And throughout all of that, Dave has been the one that has pulled all this together for all time. So we just wanted to take a moment and recognize Dave for all that he's done for the students in the community here. And if you will give him a big round of applause. Appreciate it. Thank you for having us there. They're going to do pictures. We're going to walk over here.
Mr. Harper, we didn't really give you an opportunity to say anything. Would you like to share a few words with with us?
Sure, sure. I'll tell you, just a couple of things. By the way, I've got my family here with me, my wife Jenny, and son Doug and his wife Jane. James was a certified teacher at Georgia also, mostly elementary, as I recall. Yeah. Anyway, she was my unofficial mentor also, but you know, encouraged what we were doing, but it was just, it was so much fun. It really wasn't work. It was, it was taxing, yes, but it really wasn't work, honestly. And we had up to, let's see, we did the fundraising, that's right, and Chad's right about the number. I think it's 150 or maybe a little over, just while I was with the program before Richard Hollenstein got it started about 30 years ago. But anyway, it was, the reason it was fun for me too was that I learned as much as I hope the kids learn through this process too. I mean, it was just, and we'd do stuff in the various schools, middle schools, then junior high, and also occasionally like the high school, doing mock trials and also doing mock interviews. And that was, that was fun because I remember sitting out with one of the, I think it was a senior, and the idea was to look at the resume, make some critique of the resume, and then work on his interviewing skills for potential employment or whatever his next step was going to be. So I remember this one boy, very, very sweet, smart guy. We talked about, he gave me a draft of his resume, and I'd make some comments on it after we, we'd talk about it. So I'd hand it back to him and say, "Okay, is there anything you don't understand, anything that's not clear?" So he took the resume and looked at the notes I had on it and said, "Well, I don't understand anything." I said, "Really?" He said, "We've been talking about this," and I wrote it down for the last 20 minutes. "What is it you don't understand? Why don't you understand it?" He says, "'Cause I don't read cursive." I said, "Oh, jeez. Did you give me that thing?" So I took it back and I printed everything. I said, "How about now?" Yes, he handed it. I mean, it was just that kind of stuff all the way through. And I'm going to bore you with these stories, but that was what made it fun. That was made it where I learned as much as the kids did. There was one, one other I want to share with you, and I'll shut up. But this was Future Cities program. We had an architect, two similar neighbors, work with the kids and work on their future cities projects. And they'd build tri-fold projects, make, construct them. Then we'd come in and do the judging of them. I remember I was judging someone one day. These four girls, they would work together in teams, but the four girls were on a team. They had the display on a table. And I looked at it. It looked very nice, very organized, except one thing I didn't understand. They had something that was a little board, maybe, I don't know, maybe two inches by three inches on that display, and it had 12 little, I call them, they look like pieces of broken glass on it. I said, "Okay, I give up. What is this? What are these things?" And she said, "They smiled." You know, they said, "Well, that's our solar collection field." I said, "Solar, solar collection?" I said, "Those don't look like any solar panels that I've ever seen before." Then they smiled again. They said, "Well, that's true." But, and we made them this way because we knew that the greatest effect of the sun would be when the, when the solar panel was directly in line with the sun. And in order for that to happen continuously through the day, those solar panels had to rotate, and that took power to rotate those solar panels. I said, "Okay, back to this. Now what is..." Well, the idea here was that no matter where this, they were in, the sun was in the sky, it would catch one of the panels on this, on this solar collector, because they were, they were glass diamond panels. So I said, "That's absolutely amazing." I said, "Now, I don't know how the surface area works versus how much power you're getting out of these." But the fact was, what really reminded me about it was, they, they came up with that. They thought of that. They thought of a power-saving way of generating power. And that, that's the way it was the whole time that we were working with the kids. And the other instructors, there were up to 14 of us at one time, had the same kind of experiences. So anyway, thanks. Thanks for the opportunity. Okay, Flack. Mr. Nelson.
Well, Mr. Harper, as a retired educator, I want to tell you, I taught at Jasper Middle School. I never had the privilege of interacting with you directly. I taught a different population, and so we just didn't, our paths didn't cross. But every time there was something special and intellectually stimulating on a whole different level, your faith, you were always there. You, it was there. You were a fixture in our school, and we were very, very grateful. And to think of the lives that you touched, you know, might as well get your certificate and come back. Thank you for everything.
Next item, superintendent reports. Dr. Thomas, I'll turn the meeting over to you.
Okay, thank you, Chairman Carter. At this time, I want to ask Amy Smith, our chief financial officer, to come up. Ms. Smith, want to give us a financial update?
Thank you, Dr. Thomas. Martha, just a moment to catch up with us. What we have for tonight is our monthly general fund review. As of the end of May, we had collected 87.75% of our budgeted revenue and expended 77.88% of our budgeted expenditures. As I always remind you, don't get excited. At this point, I know we're in June, but in the month of June, we did record salaries and benefits for all but the 12-month staff for three months. So we'll have a large check coming in. We start, we have scheduled right now, in the last two weeks of June, we have six payroll runs. So we'll be quite busy. Come see us. We'll put you to work. Our consolidation of funds, Fund 150, reflects expenditures through May. Transfers have been made to general fund and federal programs through the month of April. Just remind you too on that one, that it takes a couple of weeks to go through the process to get the approvals to make those transfers. So everything is on time, in line, and as we're coming into year-end close. I always love to report that we have absolutely no debt in Pickens County schools. Our capital outlay, our splosh revenue for the month of May 2023 is $709,725.88. Interest earned for the month is $869.22. Expenditures totaled $365,000 to $784.8. And that brought our month-end splosh balance to $10,776,351.63. Our special revenue funds, we have collected 86.31% of our budgeted revenue and expended 93.43% of our budgeted expenditures. On those special revenue funds, of course, we have to spend the money first, and then we get reimbursed. So it works the opposite way of that general fund. We did do our FY '22 Georgia Department of Audits and Accounts exit conference. Oh, gosh, what day? Two weeks ago? The draft report arrived today to me. I have a couple of questions, a couple of things I need to clear up with them before I sign off, and it will come to the chairman. And then I'll leave to Dr. Thomas or to Dr. Goodman. I'm not sure on that, but I'll find out by tomorrow. Everything went great. No findings. It was a great report overall. After it is filed, once it's signed off by all three parties, it then goes back to the Department of Audits. They have a little bit of a processing time. Problem will be about four to six weeks, and then you receive a digital copy. I will ask you for the next few weeks, have you received this copy? I need to verify that everyone does receive their copy of that report. So I will follow up with each of you on that.
Amy, this is my first year, my first year I was involved in the audit process. Pickens County received the highest possible rating on an audit. My thanks to you, Dr. Goodman, and your staff.
God's a first of all. Appreciate that. And just to let you know, this has been ongoing. We started this particular audit February 23rd, collecting documentation. We do a lot in the background before those dates, but that's when it actually started. So I received that email with the draft at close today. So we are involved in that process for quite some time. So we do appreciate all the help from all the schools, all departments. I do aggravate people about paperwork quite a bit, so I'm sure they're glad when this audit ends too. But we're very pleased.
And when she is aggravating you, there's a reason for it. We say it. Thank you.
There's a lot of paperwork involved in some of this. Do you have any questions about the monthly reports?
Ms. Smith, thank you very much. At this time, I'll call off Chris Wallace. Mr. Wallace is our chief operations officer for an operations and construction update.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas, Chairman of our Trail Board members. Thanks for the opportunity to present some information to you tonight and give you an update. So I'll start out with our maintenance work order report for the last month of the school year. We had 102 maintenance requests for the month of May, and the total for the year were, that we calculated just from the school, 1,447 total maintenance requests from the six schools. Right now, this is our busiest time of the year trying to catch up. Obviously, we are able to get some things done in schools without there being a lot of people in. That's really a good time for us to catch up on some things, and I'll go over some of the summer work here in just a couple of minutes. Also, just want to mention that we have, one of our maintenance workers had to undergo surgery today for a non-work-related injury that he sustained. I'm probably going to take him out for a few weeks. And so just keep him in your thoughts and prayers as he recovers from surgery and then is out for a while from our department. So we will figure out how to, how to make it without him, but he's a vital part of our team. So just keep him in thoughts and prayers, please. Next item I would like to bring up is just mention that we are looking at purchasing a couple more vehicles. When I find some things we've been looking for, I don't want them to get away. So we, we have another truck that I would like to replace some of our aging fleet. And I talked to Ms. Smith, and we talked about a way to potentially do this, and I just listed out there, replacing some of those 06, 07, 08, 2010 models to get our fleet a little more current, a little more efficient, a little more dependable. A lot of times, these guys are getting called at different hours, and we need to make sure it's reliable transportation to get them there and make sure we have what we need. So this will help our fleet immensely. So I would ask for your consideration there. The summer work that I've listed out here are just a few of the highlights. We've got a crew assigned to preventative maintenance. That's all they're doing this summer is for the air conditioner, HADC systems, and going in and cleaning vents, cleaning returns and registers, and just making sure that from the building side that everything's fresh, and then also the units themselves on top of buildings. A lot of times, we're cleaning coils, replacing belts, things like that. And then, of course, waxing of the VCT flooring, the composite tile, ADM, of course handles, handles bulk of that. We have to help support that. Damage-broken ceiling tiles. So far, we have Hill City completed, Tate completed, or excuse me, Harmony completed, Tate completed, and Hill City is almost completed. So started at elementary level, going to be moving on through, and I have a couple of guys dedicated to doing that. Some of these in bigger places, higher ceilings require lifts. And to bring those lifts in, coordinate that with the flooring. We don't want to mess up the flooring. You don't want to wax and then bring a lift in. So coordinating that around some waxing. So we've got that going on. My goal is to get everything tidied up so that we have a baseline and know if there's damage going on above that for heating your air unit or roof leak, then we know exactly what we got, and we can document that and begin trying to figure out the problem, not just keep going ceiling tiles at it, right? So that's, that's where we're at with that. One gentleman is going to be pressure washing all of the entrances and the curving sidewalks. We've got some areas that really need touched up around the schools and around this building, some of our other facilities. So we are waiting on one component to come in. It was more expensive to have it hired out than to do it in-house. And so we were doing that in-house and getting that started probably Monday when we get all the equipment here and ready to go. And then some security upgrades that I wanted to mention at the high school is the only school office that doesn't have a safety vestibule. So I'm looking at a way to make that a little safer where there's a buzz system to get them into the main body of the school, and also protect the receptionist area there. It's pretty wide open. If you've been there, you kind of know what I'm talking about. So working on that. And then down at JMS here right beside us, we have a couple of doors that we need to have access entry cards on. Talk to Mr. Thompson. We've got a plan for how to make sure we don't have to leave a door where kids can access in and out, back and forth with multiple buildings that they have down there. So working through that. Playground multi-improvement is pretty much a standard issue. One thing I'm trying to do this year and budget in to make sure we do is a couple of refreshers, just the first of the school and then halfway through the school year, so that we're not running into those bare spots and not running into any mud issues as much. Got one playground that we are going to have to do some more significant work to with some rainwater runoff areas. So working on some options for that. Wood floor refinishing. Tate's our only school where we really have to, have to think about this, and we're getting those hallways, you know, not re, not taking it down to the wood, because that wood's been taken down a lot of times. So just getting it, getting it refreshed, okay? New, new poly on there. So we've got, got that going to happen here in the next day or two, and working with the admin over there to make sure we work with their schedule. Gym floor refinishing, looking at when that's been done and putting those on a schedule. Some of the gym have to be done a little more often than others. We usually wait on high school till September break to do, and the junior high, they've done it both ways. So kind of looking at those and what we can budget for, make sure that we get those on a rotation as well. LEP, which is luxury vinyl plank, that we're doing kind of what we did in the junior high. That's what we're replacing tile with. It's a lot more, it's a lot more economical to take care of than, and labor-intensive than the VCT every year. You don't have to wax it, and it cleans up, and it's very durable. And then, of course, painting, typical painting that we do in all the locations. So that's a little bit about the summer work that we got going on. Very busy time and a lot to juggle and make sure that we are not getting in trouble with Ms. Smith and make sure we have money to do what we're trying to do. I appreciate her helping keeping me straight on that in that area, because there's an unlimited amount of improvements and things that we can continue to do. So we've got to be strategic about how we do that. Project update. Want to get Martha to bring up a couple of items. She'll bring up the image first. We've got an artist rendering. This just came in this afternoon. I was excited. I walked in Dr. Thomas's office today. We just got this hot off the press. So based on the decision that was made in March by, by you guys, this was what he came up with. We had a floor plan from there, floor plan, but this was the first I've seen of any rendering or of the elevations, which we'll bring up next, about what that one story field house would look like. And I gave some guidelines to our architect of what we wanted to try to make sure we had, but this is what was created as a result, and I thought it turned out very well. And it looks, looks like a really nice facility there. So Martha, if you don't mind, if you'll pull up the PDF and show you the elevations, which would have the sides, elevation, rear, front, and just kind of a scope there at the bottom of what it would look like in comparison proximity to the board that's there. We did not want to entertain moving that video board. It's 24 feet in the ground in a six-foot diameter hole, and I remember when they put it in, there was a lot of concrete and steel involved. So it would be a lot of work to move the board. So we're going to try to work around that without it interfering with the construction. And I can't tell right there, but it's slated to be about 25 feet off of that. So the track project, as you may recall, we, we discussed resurfacing the track at the high school versus trying to add lanes there. It just wasn't feasible. And also upgrading track equipment and replacing the storage buildings that we'd be losing as a result of the field house. I recommended that we operate that project on our own versus putting it in the contract with the field house and lumping it all together to save money and also give us autonomy of how to work that project in versus allowing them to put it in their schedule, because in doing so, we wouldn't have a lot of control over that. And so I mentioned that this would be carefully quartered graft and due to them taking place at the same time and on the same site. So the challenge that we're facing with this project is the small, what I'm calling the window of opportunity, of how to get this project done in the timeframe that we would like to get it done in, due to several factors that the company obviously has, and then several factors that we create by our schedule. So trying to walk through that is a little bit challenging. We've talked about some options. I've reached out to the company and also to folks in that business of trying to get some creative ideas of how we can possibly make this happen as soon as possible and obviously get something for them, because I know that they, they would like to have that as soon as possible. And that's becoming a challenge, like I said. So working through it. I'll keep you guys updated and certainly report back to you how we can do that. I do know that as a big company, they do a lot of work. The gentleman I've been dealing with said that they're on Florida State and Florida Atlantic University right now doing track projects. So they work for some big places, and they're way out ahead as far as scheduling. So have to get them pretty quick, get them set ahead from a pretty far timeframe to get them in here. But we're going to work through and get creative and see what we can do about getting that done as soon as possible. The other project I wanted to mention very quickly was the drag and drive paving project. We talked briefly about this and discussed this in the boardwork session. We're going to have to address that at some point, but the holdup was finding out about the deeds and the easement and those kind of things. We had to get an attorney involved. And yesterday, late afternoon, I got the information back from the field house, or excuse me, from the paving project. Let me see. I've got this right here. So for the paving, it's slated to be, you know, over $100,000. So we're going to have to, obviously, if we want to do that, we're going to have to look at how we want to pursue and how we want to go forth and, and put together bids for that. But we do have the obligation legally, and we do have the right legally. We determined that through this process with the deeds, and I did some work up at the courthouse to get some information to be able to take to the attorney, had a good, good discussion with that attorney, and then they produce back documentation for us to show that on paper. So we do have that in hand as of late yesterday afternoon, and so we can talk about that as we go forward in looking at that project, seeing how we want to go about it and go forward there. So that's all I have going on with the projects and the summer update. The last couple of things I wanted to mention was just that what we got going on in transportation. Obviously, bus maintenance, getting items ready for the new year. They use this time to make sure we get some routine maintenance taken care of. We're shorthanded in the shop still with technicians, but we have a bus driver that's been, that's mechanically inclined, has been assisting, and he's been a lifesaver. So I want to give him a shout out. I really appreciate, Ben Bowman is his name, and he's really helped out immensely in that shop this summer, and, and maybe able to help us even more going forward. So we're working on that. Working through the Traversa new routing system. Obviously, those routes have to be built and put in, and anxious to get Mr. Harris on board, because he has been with Traversa, working with them for, I think, 13 years. So he very well in tune with that program and that software. So I'm excited that he's going to be on board to take a look and, and hopefully make us more efficient and more effective in our routing. School nutrition and talking to Beth, she busy as ever. We're dealing with a cooler issue, a freezer issue that we're having to, had to evacuate a freezer and do some work to it. So she helps with that process. And then she just wanted to report that we are full swing in the summer meal program, and it started this past week, and we'll run through July 21st, and then we won't be serving through July 3rd through 7th through that week. But otherwise, they'll be serving this summer. And then lastly is the school update from Ms. Gail Smith. If Martha, we can pull that report up that she sent to us, just monthly, the last monthly report of the school year, kind of show you what student health indicators are there and how many visits and what we're seeing. One thing Ms. Smith and I worked on is just tracking what we're up against and making sure there's no facility issues that we can attach and, and mitigate as a result of anything that we're seeing. So we're studying that, some looking at trends and what we're running into, and then, of course, how to make sure we're taking care of these kids in the best way and providing the best care that we possibly can. So got some great partnerships with the telehealth and the urgent care. So got some good things going there that her and her crew have done a good job with. So that's it for my department update. Can I answer any questions for you guys?
Chris, on that paving.
Yes, sir.
Did you find out anything more definitive if they're, if they're able to continue that third rail from the red and tracks to Wolf Farm?
So the company that I originally talked to, just to give me an idea of what we're looking at, from the DOT right-of-way, we can, we can do what we, what we would like to there. I don't think there's any issues as far as legally for us to be able to do that. The DOT right-of-way comes up that hill a little bit, so that's going to be, you know, a little, a little bit of a touchy situation, because then you have to get them involved with having access to their right-of-way. But as far But as far as adding, we're just going to be talking about what we do with that ditch. The drain is a pretty significant ditch on that side and being able to make sure we handle that runoff or be able to pipe it or whatever we would need to do. So, that's something we can do, but I think the paving company, when we get to that point and we decide to go there, that would be something we would want to bid into that project because they're the ones that would be, they would want to set the base and all that to be able to do so. So, that would be my recommendation for doing that. But that would help keep the flow coming from south down from Tate side of things, what you're mainly concerned about, where there's not the necessity to yield in that lane and keep those lanes separated. If people need to change lanes after that, then they'll have the opportunity to do so. Is that correct? Okay.
That, that is more of a safety-minded thing because we haven't had any lately.
Yes, sir.
Of course, we've had considerable number of accidents there.
Yes, sir.
Of course, the new light has helped.
The new light has helped tremendously, and we were very fortunate and glad to get that going. And it seems to be operational. We had a few snags at first, had to adjust the timing some, but I think it actually, I've watched it several times in the morning especially, and it seems to work really well, a little better than I thought it would. It's not very long, but their purpose and their idea behind that is that it cycles faster all the way around. So, you're not waiting any time. It's not allowing time for it to build up on any, in any direction. So, I think it's working and doing what we're supposed to do. But I will remind you that it's still on the books to have a roundabout project there, and that'll be to them, of course. But if y'all have any input on that, or you want me to share any information with them, feedback to them, I'm glad to. I've gotten to know those guys pretty well. So, it's just a lot of traffic coming in and out in a short period of time. Any other questions I can answer about these reports? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace.
At this time, we'll call it that. Good. Give us a curriculum update.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas, Chairman Garth, Trail Board members. Tonight, we're going to talk about a lot of things that are going on in curriculum, some really good news. So, this was the first week of Dragon Days Steam Camp, the summer enrichment camp that we started last year. And then, this year, we had 200 students sign up within the first couple of hours, and they started Monday morning, and they're having a great time, and everybody's doing really well over there. And when I talked to Kelly Flat, who's the director this year, she said that I think almost all of the teachers, the ones who are still here that worked it last year, also came and signed up for this year. So, that's pretty successful for the kids and the teachers. That's good news. We also have some very preliminary test scores. And I want to say that these come straight out of our reporting system. It's raw data, but we have to use the same raw data each year to compare because I can't take raw data in May and work with staffing and curriculum instruction and planning because we don't get information from the state until September. So, we use the raw data and the percentages we have that we use internally, once they scrub the data and take out kids that are not full academic year, and they do some different things like that. So, the percentages will change a little bit. Everyone in the strategic plan got our, they got numbers from our raw data, but that's what we have to use every year to just compare. So, if that makes any sense, it might be 90% in raw data on a certain category, and then it's 88% when the state sees it, but that's because they move some kids around and take some things out. Okay? So, comparing apples, apples to apples, from school year 2022 to school year 2023, we are always talking about, if you remember, the kids who are in levels three and four, which are proficient and distinguished. That's where we want the kids to be. So, the increase in each of the tested areas, there are 27 areas from third grade up through high school in math and ELA and all the grade areas, and then some grades do social studies and science. So, those are 27 areas. And in 17 of those tested areas, we increased some of them up to 10 percentage points. That's 63% of our tested subjects increased this year. When I looked at last year, from 21, 2021 to 2022, 58% of the tested areas increased that last year. So, this is a pretty good, significant trend to keep moving forward and keep getting to that three and four. Additionally, we want to recall that when the state reports us, it's two, three, and four. So, again, those numbers may look higher, but they're including those developing kids, and that's great. That's what they want to use, but we want to have all of those kids at proficient. So, that's the numbers we use. In school year 23, some significant improvements and great things to talk about is in eighth grade, all four content areas increased significantly, significantly up to 10 percentage points. That one was in science. And then, also in 23, all of the high school content areas had an increase for students scoring two, three, and four, which is what the state wants, up to 10 percentage points, and that was in American literature. So, those are some really great areas to look at. And then, as the state numbers start coming out, we'll be able to drill down more. You'll see exactly which grade level, which content. Okay? Those are test scores. This year, this month, in curriculum and instruction, we also worked on the leadership initiatives through our strategic plan work on the action team. And we were able to have Dr. Thomas here for our first team meeting for action team planning that was really good so he could kind of dig in and see where we're going. And Matt Combs from the high school, he's one of our new principals, and a couple of our new principals here, Ms. Kreshmar and Ms. Petty were also there, so that was great so they could see that. We, in curriculum and instruction, we have people from our department in communication and engagement and student achievement and success. That's where we work. And then, the other two areas are operations and organizational and operational effectiveness and high-quality workforce. So, those are the four areas of strategic plan. That was the draft we were working on on June 1st. This month, the team members are working on the initiatives and action steps to move forward. And then, we will take it back to Glissi, our support service people who are helping us. They will be able to look at it, help us craft it, work with Dr. Thomas, and then hopefully, late July, early August, we will finalize that, and that's when you'll be able to see the full strategic plan and improve it. That's where we are in that process. Also, as we start planning for the 23-24 school year, Dr. Thomas, most of the school leaders and the curriculum instruction team, we attended a North Georgia RISA Leadership Summit. It was over right over here at Chat Tech. It was great. We had presenters Todd Whitaker and Jimmy Cassis, which are just, they're phenomenal. They're just fabulous. So, we got some team building done. We got to work together and get our new leaders ready to go for the next school year. That was a great summit. Also, the next day, Chris Parker, Corey Thompson, and Carolyn Wilkins attended the GALE course on leadership coaching in Athens. GALE is our Georgia Educational Leadership Program. So, they were over there doing leadership coaching to make sure we're ready for the next year. And then, finally, teacher leaders. 19 teacher leaders and administrators are attending the Professional Learning Communities, or PLC, PLC at Work Training in Atlanta, which was an initiative that we started back in March, starting from teacher leaders. It's from classrooms and moving up. They're asking us and telling us what they need, so we're trying to set up the PL for them. And that's going to build capacity as we continue to improve our processes and initiatives related to high expectations in those level three and four kids. In order to do that, we have to make sure that our multi-tiered system of supports is secure, the procedures are in place, and we do that through the PLC process. So, we've been busy this night. Do you have any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Sounds like we've made some huge strides.
Chairman Garth, so that's all of our superintendent reports at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas. I'd like us to our action items. First action item is approval of personnel. Do I have a motion to approve the Personnel Action Report Number One as presented?
Second.
Second from Mr. Lau. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Do I have a motion to approve the Personnel Action Report Number Two as presented?
Second.
I'll second that question.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? Next item is the approval of FY23 budget amendment. Everyone had time to review that amendment. Do I have a motion to approve the FY23 budget amendment as presented?
Salute.
Mr. Williams. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Finley. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Five oh, the budget amendment carries. The next item is spending resolution. Must be a spending resolution because we haven't finalized the budget for various reasons for July, and it is spending resolution to continue. That's just a layman's explanation there. Do I have a motion to approve the spending resolution as presented?
Second.
Mr. Lau. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Finley. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries five oh. Approval of FY24 salary schedules. Dr. Thomas, would you like to just give us a quick overview on?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Thank you. What we're recommending for our certified staff is that we increase our local supplements from 10% to 11%. Also, that we have a step increase to year 23. Right now, the state tops off at year 21, so we'd like to increase that to year 23. And this is in addition to the state salary increase of $2,000 for every certified employee. We'd like to recommend that for our certified folks. For our classified folks, the state increase of $2,000 only applies to certified, but to mirror that, we'd like to recommend that we give a 3.5% increase to our classified employees. And then, we'd also like to recommend that we grant prior job experience for our classified employees up to 10 years. And so, that means that there is a mechanic that we hire who has 10 years of being a mechanic in a car dealership, that we give them credit for that particular experience. So, those are the recommendations we'd like to make with our salary schedules for fiscal year 2024.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas. I will make a motion that we approve the FY24 salary schedules. May I have a second?
I'll second that.
Mrs. Finley. Is there any discussion? At the previous meeting, I think I mentioned there were some good things coming. To raise that retirement rate from 21 years to 23 locally is a huge step, as well as many of the other things. And my thanks to Ms. Parker and Dr. Goodman for their tremendous amount of work and help with that. All in favor? Five oh, motion carries. Next item is consent agenda. And on the consent agenda, it revised public participation in board meetings. It's removed some of the more vague language from our previous policy based on recommendation from the Georgia State Department Association. Revised policy on medicine for students in the school and approval of the financial reports. Minutes from the May meetings surplus from each of the schools primarily worn out, damaged, outdated electronics. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda? A second.
I'll second.
Mrs. Finley. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Five oh. Next item, public participation. Dr. Thomas, have we received any requests for public participation at this meeting?
No, sir, we have not.
Next item, the board comments.
Just say to all our staff, I hope that you'll see from this board, our people are what make a good organization. And I think our, you have to pay people well if you're going to have good people, and that's the step we took with this salary schedule. And so, I'm excited about that because I want to be a great organization, and a great organization is great people, and we got to keep great people.
Dr. Thomas, do you have any final comments? Actually, I do. I'd like to just publicly thank and recognize Dr. Goodman. For those of you who don't know, Dr. Goodman on Tuesday was recognized as the sole finalist for the new superintendent's position at Athens County. And we're grateful for the service that Dr. Goodman has provided at Athens County. We are especially thankful for her direction, you know, from January through the end of May. And we're grateful and just wish her the best of luck. I just want to publicly thank you, Janet, for the work that you've done, making my transition very easy, and wish you the best of luck in Athens.
Any further comments? If not, I will make a motion to adjourn this meeting. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? We are adjourned at 6:46. All members bear with us. We have to do some photos. I forgot to mention. One other item, we're already adjourned. One other item. We are completely roomed and ready to go with driver's education to pick us out for next year. Big Carl will be here very shortly for some photos.
Thank you.